About two seconds. I'll be on November eighth, twenty seventeen, Heinzberg Planning Commission meeting order. So first order of business is agenda changes. I don't have anything for changes. Anyone else have anything?
I just like to have a few minutes at the end to give a report on that workshop I went to.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, I'd move on to item two, public comments for non agenda items. Fortunately, there's nobody in the audience tonight, so we'll move on quickly to item number three, Planning Commission work plan.
So when I, John, asked that this be a discussion item at this meeting, and I said, good timing, John, because it's budget time for the town, so all the departments and committees are thinking about what they might need for funds for the next fiscal year, which doesn't begin until July first of twenty eighteen, so it's a ways off, but we plan ahead. So what, all I did was put together a quick one pager on what your current projects are right now, what some of the future projects that, or at least on my list of things that you began work on, that you might want to continue work on, and then, just for past history, a rundown of your previous projects over the last few years. So you guys can drive this discussion, but I'll just quickly reiterate what we're working on now. The housekeeping changes that you spent quite a long time on this year are going to a public hearing, based on your last meeting, and that public hearing scheduled for your December thirteenth meeting. And my hope is that, depending on the level of feedback and whether there's additional work to be done, that we could deliver that package to the select board in Feb-, by February, so that they could then stew on it and have public hearings and consider adopting it, or some version of it. The other project that you're currently working on, and again, I've spent a lot of time on, but not recently. It was earlier in the year, and last year, that you had spent more time on it, was the village growth area regulation revisions, and by way of history, there was some movement here at the planning commission to get the select board to adopt some interim zoning, to limit development for a period of time as regulation revisions were considered, tie-ins to wastewater allocation and the like. The select board, twice, declined to do that, and so you, as a commission, said, well, we better hurry up and get on to that. So you did start talking about a variety of regulation revisions, specific to the village growth area, and these housekeeping changes sort of winded their way in as well. So some of the things that you have already talked about are the definition of mixed-use development. You've talked about official map revisions that you think need to be made. You did talk about some density allowances and bonus changes to our density allowances and bonuses. And then there are several items that you haven't yet discussed in any detail. So infrastructure capacity phasing and annual building limits is something that I believe you wanted to discuss. We haven't done that yet. Site design and building design standards, refinements to the ones we have currently, that's a topic that is still to be discussed as a part of this larger village growth area concept. And use allowances, especially in the Village Northeast District, where there's been some specific suggestions made. So this, this large group of what I call village growth area regulation revisions, you are, you know, you have discussed some of it, and you're waiting for draft language from me on that I haven't delivered on yet, and then there are some items you haven't talked about yet that are still, you know, there. So those are the two current projects, just to keep it simple. You've got housekeeping changes that are largely done, you're gonna get some public feedback on that in December, and then these village growth area revisions, which I think will be the main focus once, once that housekeeping public hearing is over and you've made any changes that need to be made based on public feedback. So the items that are listed under the future are principally three items that you had discussed in, several years ago, as, as items you wanted to work on and actually did start work on, not all of you, because you weren't all here then, but. And so the Rural Residential One District, there were some discussions about changing the zoning for that district. Those began in twenty thirteen. Same time, there were discussions about changing the zoning for the Shoreline District. Both of those discussions made substantial headway and then were tabled for more pressing matters, so they could be gone back to. And there was this idea about a comprehensive overhaul to the zoning regulations, and that was a project that we had started saving money for in the budget process, and we'd also applied for a state planning grant, and unfortunately didn't get that planning grant. So it's still a project that I think is worthy and needs to happen for fear that our zoning regulations may eventually collapse under their own weight after forty-five years or so of, you know, tweaks and changes. But we don't have the funding to do it quite yet. And then, we just, we just adopted a new town plan, so in addition to those three sort of projects that you could wander back to, we have a whole host of action items from the new town plan, some of which are tagged to your commission as being the lead entity to work on. So I think it makes sense to think about those, even if there's plenty of other work that's in the queue. And you may decide, based on looking at those, that, you know, some of these other items, hopefully not the two that we're currently working on, but the other ones listed under future, maybe those continue to take a back burner if there are other items that, in the town plan, that you feel are higher priority. So that's by way of summary. What I promised to give you tonight, that wasn't in your packet, was a breakout of the planning commission action items from the plan. So that's here. If you didn't grab one from the table, I can hand you one. Anybody not get one of these?
This one you just sent us?
Yeah, I just sent it this evening. I just worked on it this evening before the meeting. This one goes out. So there is a digital version in your email bucket and on the Dropbox site, if you want a digital version. So.
I thought there, I read somewhere from the last meeting, tabled something waiting for.
More board members be here.
Oh, there was, there were a couple pieces of the housekeeping changes that were still wanting to have a full board to just, to get consensus on. And because you agreed to warrant a public hearing, we talked about basically having that be an open conversation at the hearing.
Okay.
So that you could get public feedback and also, you know, finish up any board discussion of that, either at the hearing or the meeting, you know, meetings after that.
When is that hearing announced?
December thirteenth.
Thirteenth?
Yep. So this list that I just passed out takes all of the two-hundred-plus action items in the plan and just some, just highlights the ones that this commission is the lead entity on. And there are fifty-eight of them. I think twenty-five of those fifty-eight are shared, so really you're solo on, you know, about twenty-five or so different action items, which is a lot. Only two of those are highlighted as top priority action items in the plan, and I've highlighted those. And there are many ways to break down this table, that's why I sent it to you digitally. You can sort based on, you know, maybe we all just want to look at what the short-time horizon action items are, because those are the ones we should be doing, you know, right away. So there's different ways you can look at the table, but at least it's there for you to sort of peruse, and, and I can help you, you know, think, think through that more, you know, as we go forward. So that's by way of preamble. If you have thoughts or want to talk amongst yourselves about what you really want to be working on, this is a good time to do it.
I have, before we talk about what we might be doing, we might want to talk a little bit about the timeframe that we're.
Planning for?
Suggesting that we use to do it within.
Yeah.
And to get to April, that's six months from now, but we're not quite done with some other things.
Yep.
If we had six clear months, twelve meetings, two hours apiece, we could spend twenty-four hours, but we'd have to have done everything about the village growth area. So it, I understand the need to move along on, on this item, but.
You thinking that's a little overly optimistic?
I think that's a little aggressive for my short time on the commission in terms of how we like to chew on things.
Yep. I think that's good feedback.
That's my view right at the moment.
My view here, I mean, it's good to have two or three things going. You know, I think as we've seen, you know, you, you work on something, you know, maybe we task Alex to, to go back and put some wording together. That takes time. If we can switch to another topic, that means the board's not idle during that time. Yes, it's a little harder to get back on track with a subject that you left a couple weeks ago, but that's gonna happen anyways, because staff needs time to go back and research or put wording together. I don't think it, you know, I don't think we should load ourselves up with everything under the sun here, but, you know, picking, picking a couple things we want to bounce back and forth and work on, I think it's, you know, it's a pretty standard plan.
From a time horizon perspective, John has a good point. You could, we could talk about a five-year work plan or a two-year work plan. The municipality, the town tends to think in budget cycles, the annual budget cycle, and so the select board is interested in hearing every fall what the work plan is for essentially the next eighteen months. So the six months of the fiscal year that you're, that you're in, the six months remaining, and the following fiscal year that they're actually gonna budget for and set aside funds. So we need to at least look out twelve to eighteen months. You know, if it's, if it's from now until the end of the next fiscal year, it's, it's more like nineteen months. And it's tough to predict, but that, that's the timeframe I would recommend in terms of our project selection, with the understanding that sometimes hot potatoes come up that you don't have enough, you don't have flexibility and that you just have to set things aside and pick those up.
What's our fiscal year in the town again?
Uh, July one through June thirtieth, yep. So if you, if you're committed to finishing the housekeeping changes by February, and, and maybe within that period, but also after that period, focusing on the village growth area revisions, yeah, the dates I put down, John's probably right, are probably not as, they're probably a little rosy in terms of completing a draft by April and having a public hearing by May. But even if you kick those out by a couple of months and put, push it through the summer, because remember, it's, if it's possible, it's good to not have public hearings in the summer. It's hard to get people out that time of year, just like you don't want to have them much past the one we're about to have in December because of the holidays. Even if you push the village growth area work through the summer, that eighteen-month planning cycle takes us through twenty eighteen and into June of twenty nineteen, so that still leaves a good chunk of twenty eighteen and half of twenty nineteen to select another project or two to tackle. But Joe's right, we can't do it all.
Now, so I mean, certainly village growth is, you know, it's current thing. Obviously, housekeeping, we had to follow through on, we're almost there, so, you know, maybe it's down to picking one of, you know, the remainder here. Either the, you know, sifting through high priority issues or working on RR one or working on Shoreline. Personally, I don't see a lot of, a lot of good that would come on just the board concentrating on comprehensive regulation overhaul. I think we need some help there.
Yeah, and I'll be the first to admit, I don't, I don't have the capacity to do it just as a, as an in-house project. We really would need to get a hired gun in to help us with that, with that kind of a project, hence the need for funding.
Is that something that other communities, like, are we sort of a bloated regulatory business? I mean, is, I have no basis for understanding or comparing.
Yeah, so I've noticed, so I've been doing this for fifteen years, and I've noticed in the last ten, eight or ten, several communities doing this sort of comprehensive rewrite. Some communities do it principally as a way to create a unified bylaw, so instead of having subdivision regulations and zoning regulations, and you have to look at both of them if you're involved in a subdivision, they put that into a single document. Other communities do it in a way that's more comprehensive and they're trying to sort of throw out the old and in with the new. So Westford, where I used to work and live, actually, did that in the last couple of years, and it was not just a, let's just fold two bylaws together, it was a, let's, let's do something fresh and tune up what's been, you know, decades worth of add-on, tack-on kind of language. So, yeah, I don't think we're alone. I think this is happening across the state in different communities, and most of the time, it sounds, it seems like there's a planning consultant and a planning grant that helps make that possible, because it.
And is the, the outcome, in fact, fresh?
Well, I think that, so yes, I think it is. I think that, from the ones that I've seen, just like our town plan went from a good document that was very text-heavy to hopefully a great document that's easier to read and has more tables and charts and pictures and all that sort of thing, that many of these comprehensive zoning rewrites do the same thing. So they make the document easier to read, easier to understand, which is my, my principal argument I've been making about needing to do the project to the select board is that we just have something that's difficult for staff to administer, and the layperson just can't even look at it, it's just too complicated. But beyond just prettying it up, these projects in other communities also have, have used it as a way to delve into minor form-based code sort of elements. You know, we, I haven't seen anybody do a full-blown form-based code in a, in a, in a comprehensive rewrite. They're, they're two different things. But Westford, for example, dropped in pieces of form-based code in their town center area, and I've seen other bylaws that at least use more diagrams to demonstrate traditional zoning dimensional standards or that sort of thing, or how to measure a roof line and, and that sort of thing. So I think you can do both crafting the document to be more readable and understandable while also sprinkling in a little bit of, of more innovative policy at the same time. But, you know, how much of, you know, how much new policy, how much new ground you can actually break is limited, if you're doing a comprehensive rewrite, because a lot of what that rewrite is, is just taking what you have and trying to put it in a different format that makes more sense, and, and doing some weeding out along the way.
That was, that was one question, but maybe you wanted to follow up on that?
Well, I think a follow-up on what you're asking about, does, does anybody say it's not a comprehensive rewrite, we're throwing that away and we're literally starting from.
Just starting fr- from scratch?
Totally from scratch. Has anybody done that?
I haven't heard of anybody doing that. Some of the form-based codes almost look like that.
Yeah, when you compare them to.
But I don't know of anybody who's, who's thrown out their zoning and replaced it completely with form-based code, unless Newport did, and I haven't studied their form-based code, they were the first. But Shelburne, for example, did just the opposite. They wrote a form-based code for the Route Seven corridor and then said, I don't know why they did this, some sort of political compromise, I think, said, it's optional. You can pick which code you want, the, the traditional zoning or the new form-based code. And Burlington is doing form-based, did form-based code, but they still have their overall zoning regulations with it. So I don't know of anybody who's just thrown it out and started from scratch.
And, and there might, just not to extend the argument, but there might be even other forms that we would want to consider or one might want to consider beyond form-based codes. Maybe there's some other approach. I keep looking at the complexity of our documents.
Mm-hmm.
In our little, under six thousand people little village. I mean, can't we do an executive summary or something, or something, not to dumb it down, but to make it accessible to the average person to understand what, what, what we do? Here, here's, here's the town plan, this is what it means in.
Yeah.
Simpler language, I, I don't know.
I don't either. That's also something we could explore in a project like that, to see just how simple, how straightforward it can be made. I mean, I think that's, that's part of, that's part of my ethic with our regulations since I've been here, is to try to make it as practical and straightforward as possible. Problem is, I also want it to be forward-looking and, and, you know, use the state-of-the-art kind of tools that are out there, like form-based code and outdoor lighting standards. And when you do that, it's hard to, it's hard to have both. You know, it's hard to have the most cutting-edge zoning and also have it be very, very simple and not, and not have it be a technical document, which to some extent zoning regulations are a technical document.
Oh, yeah, yeah. They're legal documents.
Well, yeah, but, and, but they're not just a, they're not like a vision or a plan, they're, they are the specifications, kind of like the instructions manual that nobody wants to read, but you have to sometimes, because you can't figure out how to program your iPad. Yep.
So you, I probably have run all over your question now.
No.
Yeah, okay.
The two that you highlighted in yellow, are those the ones that?
Those are the two top priority action items of the ten or eleven that were selected from the whole plan to be sort of elevated and, yeah.
Because I'm looking further in under, well, five point four, five point five, five point six, with water quality issues and all that's going on with Lake Champlain. That, I think, really needs to be one of our priorities, too. So the rezoning of Shoreline District and stormwater regs and all of that.
Gotcha.
Because we're really gonna be hit hard.
Well, and it's certainly a clear and present issue, and one that, to some extent, funding priorities have been shifted at the state level to help support work like that.
And there's work going on, other organizations are doing, looking at exactly these issues that we could involve, get involved with them. I mean.
Yep.
Just a bigger cohort group.
Yeah, well, that was part of the work that we started in twenty thirteen on the Shoreline rezoning. At that same moment, the state was enacting the Shoreland Protection Act, which created a whole new state permit process for people who lived along larger lakes. And actually, I think we started ahead of the state, ahead of the legislature on that, and, and we, we wanted whatever we came up with to dovetail with that. And we still, I think we still need to do some more work if we go back to that, to, to make that happen. But yeah, our highway department will be working on, you know, assessments of our town roads and where the, the highly erodible sections are and coming up with a plan, because the municipal general permit for roads is happening in first part of next year. I think by June, we'll have to make an application for that and have some sort of a plan.
That all ties together.
But, no, these, Joe and Alex, I think it sort of happened before I, I got on the planning commission, but, you know, some of the other districts and the zoning assessments seemed like, in retrospect, and, but also at the time, like, significant, albeit somewhat controversial, you know, adjustments to those districts.
Yeah, they were, they were big.
The two that are on here, the Rural Residential and the Shoreline District, you know, they've, they've sort of been pushed back a little bit. How, maybe explain to all of us just the significance of addressing those two topics? You know, how important are those?
Okay.
It's a little hard for me to, to understand that, I guess.
So I think in, in some ways, they dovetail with each other, and in some ways, they don't. You know, Shoreline District, I think we can all kind of relate back to the water quality issues and, and things like that. You know, looking at, looking at the amount of runoff into, you know, Lake Iroquois, et cetera, and trying to address that, trying to look at it not only as a Shoreline District, which is a fairly small district, you know, closely defined by, you know, the water, the bodies of water themselves, and not the watershed. So, so one of the things that, that made our discussions complex and we kind of ended on is what do we do about the greater watershed? Do we, you know, do we change the boundaries? Do we take away from basically RR one and put it in the Shoreline? Do we create overlay maps that, you know, aren't, you know, aren't necessarily either district, but, you know, they have additional regulation piled on top to try and deal with the runoff situation? What exactly do we do with regulations, you know, to control runoff? And then, from the RR one side, basically parallels, you know, what we're talking about with, with, you know, Ag and, and RR two is, number one, how to, you know, how to preserve the rural qualities and the, you know, the ability to use that land. Number, number two, specifically RR one, recognizing that RR one is a really, it, it, it really is kind of three different land use areas, all under one kind of zoning district. You know, some of it's served by water, some of it's not, so it doesn't need to be pulled apart, you know. A lot of those kind of issues, we got bogged down in, so.
Yeah, in terms of the relative importance, I think that, I think Joe's captured it, and Barbara hit it, hit it as well, that the Shoreline District was, those regulations that we're, we're trying to tweak were seen as important because of the water quality issues, both within Lake Iroquois and the larger watershed dumping into Lake Champlain. And that hasn't changed. You know, as Barbara said, it's sort of grown, so I think there's still a lot of significance there. To be honest, I'm not convinced that all the regulation changes we, we had talked about through that project are actually going to make a huge difference. But the conversation was important, and, you know, doing something that's, that's, that will make a difference is important. On the, on the RR one side, that, that part of town has much more development potential than the Shoreline District, and so the sort of clear and present issue there, it, it's more clear and present, because the Shoreline, we're just not seeing that much development. We see camp conversions now and again, we see some expansions, but there's actually room for subdivision and new development of a larger scale in the RR one district. And as Joe said, it, it really doesn't all hang together as a district now, and it would. So in some ways, I think back when Kyle Bostwick and whoever else was on the commission, who worked with Kyle, the section of RR one that goes along the Richmond Road where there's municipal water and sewer, seems like it might be underzoned, like there might be the potential for more development that would make sense there, or at least more flexibility for development that would, that would make sense there. And so there was, there was thoughts about clarifying density allowances as we did both in the village and in the rural area zoning before. But then, as Joe mentioned, the northern part of that RR one district up by Mount Pritchard on the Saint. But then, as Joe mentioned, the northern part of that RR one district up by Mount Pritchard on the Saint George border. Where there's next to no houses and it's just wild and woolly and high, you know, to- topographically uh. Significant, severe, uh it seems to, it seems to look a lot more like the RR two district where development is. Is not as um uh is not allowed to be as dense or, you know, as much of it.
Is that a possibility, boundary adjustments of the zoning districts?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's.
Adjustments for splitting.
And that's what was discussed, was the potential of splitting the RR one district and like Joe said, into three separate entities. And maybe having one or more of those join, you know, an adjacent district or become a separate district altogether. Um with a with a flavor that's more like the rural districts. But again, in terms of the importance of it, you know, shoreline, it's important because we have a lake that has some water quality issues, like Iroquois in particular. And it's um it's a, it's an issue for the whole state, Lake Champlain. But it's not like we're gonna see ten lot subdivisions in the shoreline district, there just isn't land for that anymore. Um whereas in the RR one district, uh you could see some ten lot subdivisions, uh there is, there is uh lar- there are large parcels.
Well, I'll I'll just uh, you know, as far as the shoreline, I I I don't look at it, you know, quite as uh. Frequently as say you might, um but it is one of those things where, like I'll give you, last night was a good for instance.
At the DRB meeting, you had a, you had an expansion of a non-complying structure, right?
Two applications for um. You know, adjustments or development projects in that shoreline district, I'm presuming both of those from the shoreline district rate. On Lake Iroquois and uh, you know, both well-intentioned uh people wanting to make uh. You know, a good project and um yet it seemed as if, and maybe I'm just not as well-informed as I should be. Uh the opportunity to improve the circumstance in exchange for um. The applicants getting something out of this process and and they were. Didn't seem as if the tangible tool to sort of really address the water quality issue, say for example. Uh was on anybody's minds insofar as the DRB and, you know, like. This is an extreme and I'm not necessarily saying this should be the case, but maybe it should be considered. You know, if you're gonna make amendments to a uh a camp or a permanent all-year-round house that adjoins the lake. That in fact, in almost all respects does not conform to current zoning regulations. Um maybe the expectation that you completely control stormwater runoff. From that lot or that property or that building into Lake Cham- uh Lake Iroquois is something that just is. You know, a fact of life if you're gonna make adjustments to.
Well, and you're, you're, you are, you are speaking what we previously discussed, uh Joe will remember, we had talked about, cause I think he suggested it. We had talked about changing the non-complying section of the regs, five point ten, I think. Um to do just that in the shoreline district to say um. We're, you're still gonna be able to make improvements and convert camps and um. You know, demolish something small and not in good shape and build something beautiful, uh. But that there would be that requirement, a requirement, not that requirement, but some requirement that there was a um, that there was a. Improvement to the stormwater treatment of the site in in the process. And it's funny you mention that, cause when I was reviewing Mitch's staff report for for one of those projects, um. I asked him that, I said, you know, is is the applicant proposing any, you know, any rain gardens, any um rain barrels? Is there any kind of extra stormwater treatment? And he said, no, but the overall level of impervious surface is decreasing. So that's a positive thing, um and I said, you're right, that is a positive thing, but um. Wouldn't it be nice if we could, if we could encourage the the homeowner to do? You know, to go a little further, especially for those properties, like you said, that are practically sitting on the water's edge.
But they also did a good, put in a state wastewater, I mean, they got a state.
Yeah, the one.
Put newer sewer systems in, that's a real.
Right.
Yeah.
That unfortunately, we don't, we're not allowed to regulate, so we couldn't write a regulation to compel that, the state.
That definitely helps the pollution of the lake.
One would think, one would think.
Um I think that, so is Mount Pritchard that you mentioned a few minutes ago, our our one?
Yes, yep.
Cause I think that's equally as important as the shoreline district, because anything that's up there. Is gonna run off down into the lake, look at all the problems.
Well, and that's what Joe was saying with the, part of the discussion about the shoreline district was, one of the ideas was actually what Ralph suggested. Um another one was to expand the district or to create a new overlay district. That is the watershed, so that everything up on that hill, up Dynamite Hill Road.
Yeah.
Would be, would be covered by a special set of standards that would not allow Dynamite Hill to happen again, that was one of the discussion points.
I always kind of figured that it never would be able to, but I don't know, I always just figured that, cause it's so horrendous.
Well, I think that that shoreline district, what Alex, only like seven hundred feet.
Six hundred feet from mean high water.
Yeah, so it's, i- it's actually a fairly small district and a lot of cases doesn't even, you know, come. Right to the public road.
Right.
Um so, you know, there's there's runoff on both sides, a fairly steep topography.
And that was the interplay that Joe was mentioning, th- these two district, the 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 discussions that were had previously. They were connected, the RR one and shoreline, because portions of them might get rezoned into each other. Uh if the shoreline zone was expanded or if if it stayed the same, but a but an overlay district, kind of like our flood hazard overlay district. Was laid on top of these base districts and said, you know, within this area of the watershed, regardless of whether you're in RR one or shoreline. Um there are some special provisions.
I and and I mean, there have been some actions taken, like Andrea, they were very involved. Couple of years ago with some making the rain gardens.
Oh, right.
Really, all that runoff comes probably from way up above. So, yes, the shoreline is important, but like you said, there's not gonna be that many changes, you're gonna see more, maybe camp conversions. But like Dennis said, hopefully they'll get new septics and that will be good, but I think it's even more important up above.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
So Dynamite Hill is not built out?
Uh.
It's gotta be almost.
Where's Dynamite Hill?
Well.
So, so if you're driving out of town on Pond Road and you're, so Lake Iroquois on your right as you're going towards Williston.
Yeah.
Right, when you get to the Saint Georgetown line.
Yeah.
There's a road that drops down steeply to the lake called Shadow Lane. And almost across from it is a road that goes steeply up, which is Dynamite Hill.
Who was the woman that used to live there, she was the health commissioner or something?
Yeah, that was her development to start with, that we're talking about.
Forgotten the name.
Started at Giancarne.
But our regulations today wouldn't allow that to happen anyways, would it? Steep slopes.
I think it would be much less likely, um but I I'm not sure that it couldn't happen. Um and I think that was the point of these conversations, was to was to recognize that, that that part of uh. That part of Heinsberg, both because it's within the watershed and steep and also because it's um, it functions differently from. You know, some uh property on the Richmond Road, uh right, you know, adjacent to Iroquois manufacturing or something like that. That it, that maybe it deserves to be in a separate district.
I mean, I, you know, the way I I look at it, Din- Dynamite Hill, the road itself is kind of the poster child. Because you can, you can see it, right? You, I mean, you you drive, drive back by after a large rainstorm and 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 you see the amount of. Stuff that's come from one side of the road to the other side of the road and you know where it's going. But it, you know, I think that that, you know, of of equal significance, you know, there, there is. Already fair amount of development on the uphill side of Pond Road. And, you know, what do people do? I mean, they they improve their properties, um you know, we all do this. Um and and in doing so, you can, you know, actually add to the amount of of stormwater that's. Going to go downhill, so you know, how do you, you know, i- if if you're gonna really worry about the lake, how do you mitigate that? What, you know, what extra safeguards do you put on, you know, that development to ensure that you're not adding? Right, to to flow, even even if there isn't, you know, new development, new subdivision, access on steep, steep roads, et cetera. You still have, you know, just what people do.
And so, and to bolster that, uh there's, there's just what people normally do and then there's your question of, could it be? Could there be uh more lots even? And most of the Dynamite Hill lots are thirteen, ten to thirteen acres. In a RR one district where the minimum lot size is three. And so we don't have a, we don't have a density formula like we do in the village or in the rural areas, so we just think of it in a hypothetical sense. You know, the maximum density in a three-acre zone is acreage divided by three. Um so there, I mean hypothetically, there is actually more subdivision potential up on that road, um.
But are those ten-acre lots, were those grandfathered lots or those were built after?
You mean in terms of septic uh, septic rules? Uh I don't know if they were, if they probably did come in without the need for wastewater permits. But that doesn't mean that they couldn't find suitable sites for additional lots today with innovative systems and all that. And that's just the Dynamite Hill, when you look, I'm looking at a map, so I have the advantage here, but when you look to the south of that, um. There are several, a couple of large lots that are also up on that hill that haven't seen any development yet.
I mean, I definitely see that as important, but I also see is the village where I think there's a way greater potential for development. We wanna make sure it's right.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I I recognize that one is current versus future, get or, you know, stuff we're gonna go back to, so.
Cause even the shoreline though, even the camps, I know there's not much development down there, but like you said, they fix up their property, they do things to it. But I mean, the state has come up with a lot of regulations already, right? They can't clear the trees and.
Yeah, new shoreline protection is.
But like, if if they're already cleared, like if you, if you paddle Lake Iroquois, you realize that, you know. Number, number one, it's it's fairly well-built out around the shoreline, there isn't gonna be a lot of new development there. And and number two, just about everybody kind of violates, you know, current best practices.
For the legislative law.
Kind of goes back to what Ralph was saying in that, okay, if somebody's gonna improve their property, you know, what can we? You know, what can we do to try and, try and kind of take a step back from the edge, is it? You know, stormwater, is it, is it, you know, providing vegetation against the shoreline, so you don't have, you're not, you're not clear mode?
Sometimes we luck out with an applicant, like last night, they were making more of a buffer zone around their camp and. It seemed like they were really trying to.
Yeah.
So the, so the big question tonight is not how do we solve these issues, but rather is, are these the issues you wanna be working on over the next eighteen months? So, sounds like they are.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's like you just said, um. Somebody, the the village growth area, I mean, has an immediacy to it that is undeniable, you know? And I mean, I must say for myself, sometimes I sort of think, well, you know, the combination of factors at work there. There's, there's a little bit of futility in it, I I guess, you know?
Well, the building steering committee is.
Well, it's not even that so much, it's just sort of like, okay, we've got some infrastructure issues that are like permanent. Uh or not permanent, but they're huge factors.
Yeah.
Um we've got uh barring that, um you know, development interests that are right on the cusp of. Doing something, so I sort of look at that one and I say, okay, if we're gonna take something on. We've really gotta go full bore at 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 that particular one, just so that. You know, I I'd hate to get to the finish line on that one and recognize that, well, uh we're three months too late, you know, there's already some dog project. That uh made its way through the gate and um and we had no impact on it whatsoever, or we were just too late, you know?
I mean, I think that's a big enough project on its own.
So do I.
Well, I think that was your, that was your point, John, right, is that that's probably gonna take more of twenty eighteen than uh than I anticipated, than I wrote there, so.
To to do it right, to to get to the level of. Assurance among ourselves that we've got a good proposal, it's gonna take more time.
Which tends to make you even more nervous, because some of these things may get wrapped up before we've taken that time, you know?
Yes, there's a fine balance between setting, setting goals that encourage you to go a little more speedily to the finish line and and.
Is there any way to break it up somehow, where you got a section of it done and try to get that? Well, the most influential. You know, barring, barring some really prescriptive process, where you get involved in, you know, something akin to form-based zoning that is really prescriptive. That just sort of tells um 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 development candidates, hey, this is what we want. And it's defined very specifically, and I do see, I agree with John, I mean, I think that's, that's a long process. And it's probably a process that um, you know, is difficult and may require professional support. But there are things, I think, that um maybe density is a good example. That can vastly alter um the pattern of what we're seeing in some of the development proposals that we've had before us. Not that they're good or bad necessarily, I I, but definitely density and density bonuses are. And the mixed-use piece, you know, those are pretty influential and just sort of, hey, what direction someone takes. So, you know, one could take up some of these issues and quote, get them resolved and.
Well, so I've, I've always seen this as a, as a five or six-part package that we would do as a package, but. If you wanna move some of these elements forward as discrete zoning changes, so that it doesn't wait. Nine months, you know, and it, you know, it happens, it does happen by April or March or whatever, we could try to do that, um.
Uh does that mean that we then take, we do that and we pass some few changes? And then we take on the next priority and we do that, and then we do zoning changes again?
Yeah, yeah.
Half a year later?
Yeah, we, it's more of the, it's more of the Shelburne model, I don't know if you've noticed over the, the time you've been on the commission, but I've noticed since I've been here, they seem to. Their planning commission seems to have public hearings on small zoning changes every, every few months. Uh at least three or four times a year, uh so I think in that case, it's driven more by. Uh issues that somebody brings to the fore and the planning commission, you know, goes ahead and tackles it. But I suppose we could, we could try to do something like that here with this package of village growth area changes and say, you know, we really wanna do all these things. But the first one we're gonna do and feed to the select board is, are these two items or this one item, um.
Yeah, I'm not even suggesting it's a good idea, uh I'm just raising the point, I'm, I'm sort of, you know, your mind tends to go more to. Okay, a comprehensive understanding of all the factors at work. And considering those in a thoughtful way and then you have, you know, an outcome that. Has consensus and you're pleased with, you know?
It's the idea of agile software development, I doubt anybody knows what that is, but.
Agile software development.
Yeah, so uh it used to be, you would say, what do you want? I want this big thing and, right, you'd go and you'd write it all down, oh, here's everything we wanna go do. And then they would go build it and you come back and it's like, I asked for a swing and I gave you a tire swing. Right, it gets lost and all that, so it was more, it's more about breaking it down into the small elements, you know, it's like a big messy room, break it down into small elements. You got a log of what you're doing and you take those small elements, focus on those and deliver them quickly, so you get value out of them. While you're building the overall thing, so you can tackle, you know, get really focused on the small part, that you get your head wrapped around and deliver that. While having the larger thing in mind, in that way you can adjust and you can be agile.
Have the larger thing as the context.
Yeah, but it can be, think of it like, I gotta build a car, you kind of have an idea of what a car is, right? Four wheels, a door, right? But you can get into the details, what kind of engine, what kind of transmission, and you can break it down into those components and build it as you go. And then start delivering things of value quicker.
It's a good analogy.
So, you know what I mean, and maybe we could do something like that with this.
We, 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 well, we kind of, I think everybody's got an idea of what the village is, right? And it's, maybe they're a little bit different, but we all kind of, you know, okay, we got.
And it's, maybe they're a little bit different, but we all kind of, you know, okay, we got density, we got stormwater, we've got design, we've got what is the look and feel. And it's just, if you look at it, it's like that big metal, you're like, God, where do I start? You know what I mean? You're trying to take little bits off of the whole, maybe we just need to focus on. But to your point, let's just do density, get density done. And then we'll worry about stormwater or whatever, you know, so we can tackle something, get it out there, get it done, and move to the next thing. Get forward progress and value quicker.
So you have already discussed the three bullet items, uh, under village growth. Good question, um.
God damn it, right on it, huh?
Uh, waiting, waiting on staff, yes. So I'm, per the other email I sent out, I'm supposed to have something for you on one of those things, not all of those things. Uh, by your next meeting, uh, which I think we agreed, most of you agreed that would be on the twenty ninth. And not the day before Thanksgiving, so we're just gonna reschedule that. So that, I'm shooting to have at least one of those three bullet items have actual language for you to look at at that meeting. I think your next meeting is the public hearing on the housekeeping changes. And the next meeting after that's gonna be in January, and that's gonna be just recovering from the public hearing on the housekeeping changes. So we probably won't see more language on these bullet items for village until, um, until February. It'll be a gap there because the housekeeping changes will require care and feeding. Yep. So I'm, I'm happy to try to break this apart and, and do the agile software. I like that whole concept. It really does speak to Rolf's concern about, you know, having the horse get out of the gate before you've structured the racetrack. And, um, maybe in a couple of these things, we can rejigger the racetrack a little bit before the horses leave.
Work on the gate.
Or work on the gate. I, I tend to be, and, and I've, I've gotten some criticism from this in the past from others. I tend to be, I want the whole, I want the whole enchilada, I want the whole picture. Cause I think sometimes when you, when you, um, don't deliver the whole picture, the, the pieces that you're trying to stuff into. And don't, don't work together very well, like, oh, we're gonna talk about density, but we haven't figured out phasing an infrastructure capacity yet. Well, how do you know what density to have until you know what your phasing and your infrastructure capacity is? But.
So maybe you do feedback.
Yeah, exactly, maybe that's. Yeah, we're, we could try, we're, we're waiting a little bit on that for, uh, data to come in for, from our water department. But certainly the mixed use definition and the official map revisions. And at least the density bonus changes could all happen relatively quickly without. And I'm not sure that any of those would, are dependent on the other pieces. We know which sections of the bonus strategy people aren't taking advantage of, or when they do, the community's not really getting something positive out of it. So those could be changed. And the mixed use definition, I think, I think that, you, you talked about that a lot. I think that could be changed and would be a standalone item. Same with the official map. The, the part that I, you know, I think a lot of, that I've heard Rolf talk about a lot. And I think a lot of community members would be most interested in is this, these design standards. These site and building design standards so that people can feel more confident in, in the product that a developer brings to the table. Being something the community can be proud of and, you know, is a standout sort of a thing.
But I also, didn't I hear you say, we're not the right people to come up with that? We need someone.
Well, I think Rolf was saying for a, for a.
Turn me into Baron Von Hausman, uh, I could do it.
I think for a highly technical, technical s- s- uh, specification à la form based code, we need help. But what, what, um, what I had envisioned was, um, not that, was, was tune up work. We have design standards now, we, you know, in the village, we have certain site standards that talk about buildings facing streets and roof. Uh, well, that's not, anyways, we have site and building standards. I was thinking we would take those a bit further, talk a little bit more about green space and how it should be structured in relation to development. Uh, but not go all the way to a form based code. But, but we haven't had any discussion on that yet.
Have some illustrative material.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Strewed in there, but not total a hundred percent form based.
Yeah, uh, unfortunately, I think that's a really positive way to go, and I think the community would feel that that was a positive way to go. But we haven't talked about it at all. And, and Jeff and I were gonna try to work with the village steering committee to move that this summer, and we didn't do it. And, and their committees in, um, shrink, shrinkage mode, so, uh. So it, it's not some, it's something that will take some significant time. Uh, it's not something we can rattle off quickly like the first three bullets. Anyway, I, I, it sounds to me like you're, you're, you're all in agreement that this village growth area revision stuff is what you wanna be focusing on.
Yep.
Uh, it's maybe just whether it gets parse, you know, parceled out into bits and pieces or done as a whole, um.
I think also when you come back, Alex, and, uh, and do some of what you're doing. Some of that may be clarified, you know? But I, the main reason I was asking about those other things, and they all, everything has a way of sounding important. You know, those future items, I, I just wanted to see what.
Right.
You guys thought about, um, that RR one and the shoreline district. And yeah, the comprehension regulation overall. I, I don't want anybody to ever think, and you know, I don't consider myself particularly stupid. But I'll tell you, I go into the zoning regulations of the community and I'm sort of a paid professional to quote, do that. And it's, and I'm not sort of like a really good rule geek anyway, you know, it's not sort of my love. But I go into that scene and I go like, what, what have you done here? Are you just like trying to make me feel stupid? And, you know, that, that's the way, and it's not, I'm just a Pittsburgh, it's every town that I ever forage into. And, uh, and in the end, I just, even as a quote, supposedly qualified professional. I just go in and see a person like Alex and I say, okay, here's what we wanna do.
Right, tell me whether we can or not.
You know?
We could just have the zoning start with that, just, uh, do not read further, go to, go to staff and, and, and get instructions.
Which if you think about it, uh, if that's what the regulations are doing to quote, a reasonably qualified professional. Can you imagine what they're doing, uh, to the layperson on the street? They're just driving people crazy, you know? So, that last one, comprehensive regulation overhaul, you know, I could see my English teacher from high school. Uh, pre-seeing the whole, uh, zoning regulation process, so it was edited down to about four pages, you know?
But that seems huge to me. I agree with you.
Yeah, that's a very big job.
No, no, I'm not saying, don't do it. I'm not saying do it, I'm just saying, hey.
Yeah, that one we, we need to save some more money for if we can't get grant funding. And I think we need to, we need to open up a large swath of time and resources to, to get that done. Large enough that to me, I'd, I'd like to get enough money to, to hire somebody that we can basically outsource it to and say. We're gonna talk about something else. You, you go make something amazing happen and come back to us in three months and.
If, if that person has more than a half page resume, we don't hire them.
So what's holding us up on finding out what our infrastructure is? State?
Um, it's the state permit for our wastewater treatment plant, which is in process. So we've applied for it, they've had a public hearing on it, and the state and the town are negotiating back and forth as to what that permit's gonna require. Um, and when we're gonna need to meet certain tests for that. So on the wastewater side, that's part of it. On the water side, um, which is more immediate. Uh, it's two thing, well, it's not really two things, it's, it's proving out the next well. So we're in the process of, of collaborating with Blackrock Construction on a well that they've already drilled. That may be, may solve our water needs, or at least a portion of our water needs for some time. And the well needs to be drilled deeper and wider. And so we don't know its capacity yet until that happens. And the parties reached a loggerhead as to who was gonna pay for that and how that was gonna happen. Um, since Renee's been in charge, we've broken through that loggerhead. Um, our new town administrator and the select board discussed it last night. And it seems like it's, it's going forward, but the ink isn't dry yet on the agreement, so. So it's those two things that are holding up our ability to say something intelligent about what our infrastructure capacity really is. On, at least on those, uh, topics, water and sewer.
But did I hear something too, and I don't know if it was from you or some other staff member that we really need to hire somebody. The town needs to really hire somebody that can figure out possibly what the cost will be for the septic.
For the, for the upgrades, yeah, yeah.
Because it could be huge.
Well, we have some sense of the scale of the cost, what we need is somebody to help us figure out how to finance it. You know, how much the users can bear, how much the new development can bear, and how, how we need to set allocation rates to make all that happen. And frankly, how much money we may need to get upfront from developers to, to front load the process and then re, and then. Um, rejigger that going forward.
There's also another big property that's for sale, right?
The Quinn's. The Quinn property, yeah.
Right.
That's a large track.
Uh, that's residential one, yep, yep, huge development potential there.
Pretty quiet.
But so to Marie's point, that's what we applied for a municipal planning grant for this, this fall. So we'll hear, um, by the end of December, as to whether we got that grant. And if we get it, then, um, we'll be working on that. I don't think this commission will be working on that. That'll be principally a, a technical exercise and, and more, have more involvement at the select board level. But.
So when it comes to infrastructure, how much do we need to really worry about it from a planning point of view? And, and I only say that because it seems like our, our.
That's huge.
No, no, but, but I mean, if you're talking about, infrastructure is very important about how the development gets laid in. From my, and I may be just, you know, completely layman, alpha, off on cherry rose here. But, and I just made that up, cherry rose. But you know what I mean, i- if, it seems like we've always talked about the village growth being density based on existing things that have been here forever. So we already kinda know what that is, and then really it's just about how do you phase that, like it's just gonna grow from outside, right? And that, and it, and sort of that growth is driven by infrastructure capacity.
Right.
Versus, so, does it really matter when we talk about density and how we want it to grow? Or are we just trying to fill out the whole space?
It's like what Joe has said, like, do you want it all up against one sixteen all the way to the corner, or do you wanna?
But that, you're, but right.
You don't want it to be.
But that's the phasing discussion.
Yeah, but if you can't, you need to know how, what phasing you're gonna have on how much sewer you're gonna have in water.
I mean, if, if you, yeah, if, if, if you don't deal with in- infrastructure at all. You know, and you, and you just base it on, you know, what, you know, what dense, you know, what density looks good or what densities did in the past. Which, by the way, is, is more or less what the planning commission did, right, with the village growth area, when, when we did it. Right, and then, then you have scarcity of resource, which is what we have now.
Which you didn't realize was gonna happen.
We, we didn't realize it was gonna happen, you know, things look, you know, things look positive, so we didn't worry about it. But you get into a situation that Dennis was trying to explain is, now you let the developer figure out where he's gonna cherry pick in that area. To, to put stuff, and it, it may not be the contiguous village vision that you want. So you need to understand it, right? And, and you need to, you need to understand how things or if things are gonna come online. So that you can direct the densities and, and the, um. You know, the, the build out, the phasing, to get what you want, you know, if this happens and not this. Or if this and this happens and not that. It's a, you know, it's chess.
Yeah.
Okay, cause I was just thinking of pha-, you know, yeah, we have to talk about phasing up one sixteen, or, or does it gradually kinda grow out? But I, I guess, density from a design look and feel, how the town, you know, are we saying, well, we can't have that density now, it's gotta be more suburban plots. You, you know, just to fill out the land with the, you know, I, I don't think we need to do that, I think it's, but I do think we need to talk about phasing.
Well, what are you getting, so, 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 I mean, you know, you let, let's, let's say we, we don't have. You know, and we will never have the, the septic resource to handle the, the density we had planned. Well, I, you, you can, you can play that scenario, once you know that, you can play it several ways. You can say, well, I can lower my density everywhere, right, and, and make it more suburban. Or I can change the amount of land that I want to, you know, zone this way. Because I want the density, I want it to look like a village area, right? I just can't afford, you know, the amount of area I thought I could.
Yeah, I think that's what Jeff is alluding to, is that, is that rather than give up the vision. And the, and the general areas within that, where that vision was to take place. Focus instead on, um, how you want it to look and where it happens first. So that if you can only, if we only have enough capacity for this much, then plan in that area first. And then, you know, maybe in ten years, the technology will change and you turn on the next area and that sort of thing. But, but I will say Jeff, that Joe's absolutely right, that we, we did that in the two thousand five's village growth, um, rezoning. And I think, I think the lesson in, since then has been that that was a mistake. That we, we should have, we should have thought harder about, um.
How do we want that to grow?
How much we rezoned, cause we, we doubled the size of the village, uh, and from a zoning standpoint in two thousand five. And, um, now, you know, we've had like landowners and developers create plans. Based on what, what they saw as the town's very progressive, forward looking vision. And we don't have the capacity to implement those plans. Uh, and so it makes it difficult to know, well, which, which project gets it, which one doesn't, which portion of which project gets it. And, uh, it's tough, uh.
Can you take that back then, Alex? I'm a little confused, because it's zone.
You can downzone, uh, at any time.
Back towards the village, for instance.
Sure.
I mean, that's exactly what this bullet is, you know, about thinking about village growth area and, you know, regulation revision, right? I mean.
I think when we, when we went to the select board to talk about interim zoning. There were a lot of people on the commission, this commission, that said, we're just looking to fine tune. We, you know, we're not looking to, uh, eliminate whole zoning districts, we're just looking to, you know, adjust and have. Um, some kind of growth management scheme that had phasing and that sort of thing. But it is in the plan that that, that one of the options is to do something more significant. Like turning off zoning districts or, you know, reshaping them, uh, based on those infrastructure capacity limits.
That's kinda, I mean, that's kinda what phasing is, right? You don't get to phase two unless you have the resource to get to phase two, so.
So I guess some of these things that, that I'm asking are, are around maybe prioritizing these bullets.
Okay.
Right? What's the most, so, they're, they're not hanging fruit, but what are the ones that are the most important for us? If we're gonna say we're gonna chunk these things off, what's the most important one to tackle first? Maybe it is infrastructure and phasing versus disa- site design, you, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think this is a great conversation, I, I think we bent a little bit from the original intent, was just decide kinda what areas we're working in. And what areas we're not in the next eighteen months, but.
It seemed as if that long, is in that mix.
I, I, I think that, I think the village growth area has to be there. Obviously, you know, um, housekeeping changes are there because they're almost done. And then, you know, whatever else, you know, however, other projects zero to N we wanna tackle. And I would suggest the N shouldn't be any more than one, you know, just to get something, something to feather in. As we have lulls where we're looking for writing or legal opinion. Or, you know, whatever it is, or, or hearing, or.
As much so, because it seems as if those town plan high priority action items, that there's such. Uh, seems to me to be a fairly significant overlap between at least those two yellow items. And the village growth area regulation revisions. Um, that I, I guess, I, I might suggest that they be included. Or is that too?
As part of the conversation, we deal with, as, as part of the village growth area.
That's the way I looked at it, Rolf, when I looked at those two, I said, wow, look at that, the two planning commission high top priority items are. The village growth area rezoning, pieces of the village growth area rezoning. So I, I think that's a good point, probably don't wanna set either one of those aside. For example, the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet in the, in the planning commission project. Says site design and building design standard refinements, right? That is, um, action item three point, three point one.
Yep.
So we haven't talked about it yet, it's gonna take some time, but we probably shouldn't have set it aside, given that it was, it got, you know, top billing in the town plan.
Yep.
But it sounds like you guys are all on the same page, that this 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 larger project of the village growth area regulation revisions ought to be the focus. You know, for twenty eighteen.
Yep.
I think so.
Okay.
This is a good list. I I was worried that we were gonna run out of things.
That has that has never happened in my tenure.
I thought we were gonna say finished.
Oh, now you have to come here.
We can stay home.
There wa- there is a day, I have this utopian vision that there will, there will be a day, it's it's probably many years from now. When I'll be able to come to you as a commission and say, there is nothing, like you've done all the basic rezoning. Everything is essentially in good shape, is there some really fun project that you wanna work on that you don't feel compelled to? But could, you know, is something interesting and and?
You probably won't be talked to the same people.
Well, I it's just that I remember there was one, I think the one occasion all these I've been here where I was able, and Joe was here for it, where I was able to say. Hey, we just finished something, I can't remember which project it was, village growth or rural zoning or something, it's like, why don't we all just take a breath and decide like. Look at the town plan, is there some element to this community that we should be, project we should develop and work on and? Um, that's only happened once, I'd like to get to that point again, you know, so.
I do.
Did you finish the project?
Uh, I think I think we, I think someone slapped me and said, no, there's three things we were supposed to do that we'll have to go back to, and we just kept doing that.
Maybe it's job security.
Do you wanna touch on the the budget real quick?
Yeah, let's touch on the budget real quick.
Okay, so it can be quick, uh or not, you're up to you, but uh I sent you a little spreadsheet. It's a little small print, sorry for that, um it's on the table here if you don't have one. And uh it's just the various line items in the planning and zoning budget, and it tells you what the budget was. Um last fiscal year, what we actually spent last fiscal year, that was the year that ended in June of twenty seventeen. Uh, the budget for the year that we're in, which is the FY seventeen eighteen budget. And and what I'm likely to propose uh for the fallout for this next fiscal year coming up, and then what the change is in a dollar amount. And the percentage change, uh and these line items are something that the administrator and the treasurer have. Created over the years and for consistency and being able to track things over time, they try, they try to hold on to them. Um, so most of the planning and zoning budget, like much of town government, is tied up in labor costs. Um, there's no significant changes proposed to staffing, we we did have some significant changes, just so you remember. Um in the last few years, since Peter Herb retired as zoning administrator, um we shuffled uh personnel. But we, the select board also agreed to boost uh sub- substantially the number of people working in the department. So uh no significant changes proposed, just cost of living increases, uh and.
In in that, just for comprehension, in that, so say the one sixty one, that's you, full time?
Correct.
That's.
Mitch as our development review coordinator, full time. That's Suzanne, our zoning administrator, half time.
Half time.
That's Lenore Bud, our administrative assistant, um sixteen hours a week.
Okay.
Which I forget how much of an FTE, I think that's point four, full time equivalent, and Don.
Yep.
Our recording secretary.
Okay.
So I think that all adds up to three.
Okay.
F FTEs, full full time equivalents, yeah.
All right, good, just curious.
Yep, what's not reflected in this budget are, so you see salaries and you see employee benefits. Um, you'd think that the employee benefits were um actual like health or retirement or. It's not, it's it's the town's contribution to social security, it's FICA. Um, so I don't know why the town has done it this way over the years, but w- we've almost always kept health. Insurance benefits in a separate pooled um part of the budget, not within individual departments. I don't like it that way, I'd rather see it in each department so you can get a real sense of how much each department is spending, but that's just the way it's been done. Uh, yeah, so most of the budget is tied up in labor costs, and then as you work your way down. Um, the most discretionary portion of the budget, of this budget, is the special projects line item. So that's most of the way down the 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 rows, uh and the capital transfer fund. Which we've used in the past to save up for things like the comprehensive zoning overhaul. Um, which is what I'm proposing to do in this budget is is take four thousand dollars from next fiscal year. And set it aside in a reserve fund so we can actually do that project in a few years.
Good idea.
Um, and the state, the, sorry, the special projects line item, which is the most discretionary. Uh and very much goes up and down, or in the past went very much up and down based on the projects that we had coming. Last year, I told the select board, I said, oh, it took me fifteen years to figure this out, but basically, we, in the past, we've used this money as match. To go after the municipal planning grant program that the state offers, which is annual, uh an annual grant program, and um. The way this, the municipal planning grant is structured, a six thousand dollar local match leverages the the maximum grant award. So last year, I told the select board, I said, listen, we're just gonna, we're just gonna ask for six thousand dollars every year, so we can get the maximum grant award. If we have a project that we think is, requires much more than that, we might ask for more, um but that's sort of the the basic. They all nodded their heads, so that's what I'm proposing or thinking of proposing this year, is that same amount. Now, this would be the place, if you wanted to do the comprehensive zoning overhaul in the next fiscal year. Like uh in twenty, the first half of twenty nineteen, this would be the place to say, hey, select board, we need twenty five thousand dollars extra in that line item. I guarantee you that will not be approved, uh.
But saving towards it maybe.
Yes, that's, that I've been schooled on, uh that they are, they are receptive to that sort of thing. As long as the overall budget increase is, you know, reasonable, um.
So that's the bottom line.
That's the bottom line, yeah, the instructions that all of us got, department heads got this year from Renee was. Um, give us, the select board wants to see the budget you need, but um the municipal. Inflationary percentage that that um that's promulgated for, at least for this year, is about two point eight percent. So she said, try to keep your increase, you know, within that range. And obviously, some departments have huge expenditures one year like highway, um and they maybe they're not, they're doing a different project the next. And it costs substantially less, and so that percentage won't necessarily be this, you know, as tidy as this one, but.
Yeah.
For this, for the planning and zoning department, we just don't have that, so um I was trying to keep it to the two point eight percent.
What is GBIC?
Good question, Greater Burlington Industrial Corporation, so just like the planning commission regional dues. Where we pay um membership dues to the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission, and they provide us with help and support.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the Greater Burlington Industrial Corporation is the Economic Development. Agency uh or organization for Chittenden County.
Okay.
Um, and so we provide them with some funding and, to be perfectly honest, w- we don't. We don't work with them an awful lot, so I'm not sure what our our return on that investment is.
Don't they work on trying to get businesses here?
They they do, but they tend to work on getting much larger businesses than Heinsberg sees. So with that said, they did help us with the cheese plant redevelopment, they they were very helpful with that pro- with that pro- uh project. But prior to that, I don't think they'd done any work in Heinsberg that I was aware of, um like, I don't believe they were involved in the NRG.
No.
Re- relocation, that that was all handled internally.
It might have been with Nasdaq years ago, which was called something else, now it's become Nasdaq.
Anyways.
They have been before, it's the type of thing that you might go years and not need them.
That's what GBIC is.
Can you explain that you're susceptible, the first column, it's a hundred and eighty six thousand, the next time it's one fifty six?
Right, so that means that in in uh last fiscal, not a, last fiscal year. The the FY sixteen seventeen fiscal year that ended June thirtieth of twenty seventeen. We were supposed to spend a hundred and eighty six thousand dollars, but we only spent a hundred and fifty six thousand dollars.
So that thirty thousand dollars.
See where the differences?
Is is uh should be in the one ninety seven, add it on top of the one ninety seven, that's what we'd like to do.
Yes, so I will tell you, I will tell you that last fiscal year, this was happening for a specific reason. And I went to the town administrator and said, we're gonna be saving upwards of twenty five thousand dollars in labor costs. Because of all the vacancies and uh and I said, can we do the comprehensive zoning overhaul project? Even though we didn't get the grant, cuz the grant was only gonna be for twenty thousand dollars, we'd made that up in labor, unfortunately.
Somebody went over it.
Yeah, some other departments and line items went went way over, and the town administrator can't just look at one department in isolation. That person looks at the overall budget, and and Trevor was the administrator at that time, he said, Alex, I want you to be able to do the project. But our legal budget has gone so overboard that he's, I need, I need. I need savings from other people in other places, and you're giving it to me, so.
Speaking of the legal budget, and so I look at some other line items here, like professional consulting and professional services.
There are zeros.
And there's zeros.
So some of these shouldn't have been in this list, uh our treasurer was gonna weed out some of these, and she didn't do as many as I'd hoped. Professional consulting um was a one year only budget item, couple of years back. When I had made the case for a couple of years in a row to the select board that we were understaffed in planning and zoning, we couldn't, we couldn't deliver the goods. Um, we needed more staff, and their first answer was no. Uh their second, the next year, their answer was, we believe you, but we we're not, we're not sure we can afford more staff members. But what if we give you ten thousand dollars for consulting services and you could contract with the regional planning commission? Wouldn't that be cheaper than hiring people? So for one year, we tried to do that, um it didn't work out so well. And the next year, they agreed to a staffing increase, so that the professor cons- yeah, professional consulting.
Just be struck.
Yeah, this, that shouldn't even be in there, the professional, the planning and zoning professional services, which is several lines down. That was traditionally a funded item, and it was used to hire an engineer to review something or um. Uh, get a, get a legal review of a zoning reg or something like that. And um so that is something that was in our budgets for a long time and came out, uh in part cuz we weren't using it. And and one year, the the administrator and the select board said, gotta cut your budget, what do you wanna cut? And I said, well, I I like to have that cushion in case we need it, but we don't need it every year, and so it got cut.
So what about VLCT, is that a different, different, you know, under select board or something?
So um that's a good question, um the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, VLCT is um. Uh, a municipal, they represent, you know, most of the municipalities in the state. Uh, the advice that we get from them is free, um and I'm. To be honest with you, I don't know if we pay a membership due that's in somebody else's budget, uh.
Interesting.
We get our, we used to get our insurance through them, and as a result of that, um. You know, we sort of paid in a different ways, that's changed, so I'm not sure exactly, Joe, what we pay into those Vermont League of Cities and Towns. But I do know that all of the um advice that we ask for from what they call their municipal assistance center. Whether it's a assessing question or a planning and zoning question or administration question, um they will provide feedback. For free as a part of our membership, uh they they will not provide a legal opinion. So if if it's, if it's bordering on that level of cut and dry sort of thing, they will give you some advice and. Point you to their past articles, and they will say, talk to your town attorney for that, yeah.
The, so the, the other zero lines there, NPO rural planning?
Oh, good question, so that shouldn't be there either, um I wanna say five or six years ago. The Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission and the Chittenden County Metropolitan Planning Organization, NPO. Were two separate entities, one handled comprehensive planning, one handled only transportation planning, and they merged. And since they've been merged, we paid one set of dues to the overall organization, so that, I don't, again, I don't know why Mrs. didn't delete that, that should be removed.
Calendar costs and donations.
That should also be removed in in two thousand ten, um sorry, I guess I should.
I thought that was like a planner of the month calendar.
You didn't know that next year you were all gonna be months in the calendar, planning commissioner calendar? No, in two thousand ten, uh we did a community calendar, uh as, and we sold them. And uh covered the cost and then allowed people to designate where they wanted the other half of their calendar cost to go to a Heinsberg charity. And so this had to be in the budget that one year to to account for the money coming in and going out, it shouldn't be in there anymore. It's not a real item, but keep going, what else?
Those just sit sit in there just idle.
Well, it doesn't hurt except right now, when you have to explain to somebody, what does that one mean and why aren't we spending money on it anymore, cuz it's.
We're just not using it right now.
Right, but it, we're probably not gonna spend money on it again.
Right, but the consulting, that could come up again, you know.
Perhaps, um certainly the professional services could, the consulting really was a one year event. Like, but keep going, what else, this, these are good questions, I look at this stuff, I've looked at these line items for years, so I know what they all mean.
Projects, if you don't spend it, they will let you keep saving it?
No.
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 So, if you wanted to save it for a couple of years, three years, so you could do the comprehensive.
That's what this, that's what this capital transfer fund at the bottom, the very last line is designed to be that savings account.
Okay.
That's that's the place to save it.
Yeah, so special projects is the stuff you're actually gonna do in the fiscal year you're planning for. Capital transfer is saving for a project for a future year.
And the planning.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, the planning commission regional dues, that's sixty eight eighty one.
Yep, that's the, that's the regional planning commission that we pay into.
Commission, and what do we get again for that?
Good question, so, um, we actually get quite a lot from them, uh we get review of our plan. And um determination, you know, confirmation of our plan, which by the way, they did, the the recent town plan, they confirmed, so that's all good. Um, they also uh help us with um map printing, they they will actually do more map making. I I'm able to make most of the maps that we need in Heinsberg, but um some communities can't, and they have a JS shop that will do that c- cartography. They, for us, they have large format plotters, and so I will frequently send them stuff and say, I need two of these maps for the trails committee. Or two of these maps for green up day or whatever, um but beyond that, they have, they have a um a staff of. Both uh general and transportation planners that will work with us on projects and help us do feasibility studies for new sidewalks. Or um uh actually, the comprehensive zoning overhaul that we had talked about. Uh, they, they had, they had agreed to to provide some staff support for that. Uh to coordinate with me and a consultant, and so that's part of what they do.
So hours that they would spend on any of those kinda projects are paid by this seven thousand dollars a year.
Essentially.
Essentially, we don't get an additional bill for them, from them if they help us on a, on a project.
Um, that's a good question, uh it depends on the nature of the project, so for example, uh. The Village South Sidewalk Project, which is a sidewalk that we're gonna build from the school down to the Norris Development Project. Uh, we got a state bike and ped grant to help fund that, we needed a project manager. We didn't have the capacity in the town hall to 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 do that, so we're contracting with a a a. A regional planning commission staff person to be that project manager, that we are paying for, that's coming out of that bike ped grant. So it's not covered by this, but um. We discovered that the cost of that sidewalk is gonna be substantially more than we thought, due to some need for some drainage upgrades in one sixteen. And so the grant that we got to pay for the sidewalk is not gonna be enough for the sidewalk project. So I asked one of our, I asked that project manager from the RPC, I said, I know this isn't part of your scope, but can you? There's another grant opportunity coming up, and I don't have time to write the grant, you know, application, will you do it? And he did it. And that's sort of covered in this sort of a thing, so they they help us with grant writing, they help us with review of plans and specific projects.
How they arrive at this, this number, six thousand?
Yeah, it's. I I don't know the. I, I don't know the, I don't know all the details, but I know it's based on, uh, population and, um.
Buck and a half.
There's, there's some sort of, um, equalized, population with an equalized grand list calculation. So that they're trying to treat, they have a sophisticated way of doing it.
It's not based on how many hours.
No, 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 not at all, in fact, th- these, this dollar amount that they receive from all of the Chittenden County communities. Is just a tiny piece of their overall budget, most of their budget comes from, um, the state provides some. And then they go out and, and pound the pavement for grant, you know, other federal grants. And actually, a lot of their money comes through, um, the federal transportation, um, agency authority. What, I forget what it is at the federal level, that, that's what funds the NPO side of what they do, the transportation side of what they do.
So Alex, um, on the other side of the ledger, um, have you ever done a reckoning that added up? All the revenue that comes into planning and zoning?
Oh, yeah, I didn't.
What is that, uh, run on an average basis per year, we're talking about building permit fees?
Right.
Zoning permit fees, um.
I didn't give you that, that's a very good question, cause this.
Do we count impact fees in that too or not?
I don't, I don't, cause the, cause those impact fees don't, don't fund, um, ongoing sorts of things. So, good question, um, I didn't provide that, but I have it right here, hold on a second.
They were trying to recruit people.
Yeah, that's a good question, I think.
Maybe they're offering a sign-on bonus.
Right, right.
There was a point where they.
Recruiting office at the high school.
What, what this, what this, what this expenditure summary doesn't tell you is when there are unexpected revenues that then get spent. You see the expenditure here, but you don't see the unexpected revenue, the village steering committee had some donations for benches. Right, Jeff, you knew about the benches and I don't know if.
Yeah, I spent the money.
We all know about.
I think that year might've, might've been, uh, somebody's donation that then got respent on a bench. So it made it look like they spent more than their budget, but in reality, it was unexpected revenues. Um, but getting back to Ralph's question, where's my little spreadsheet here? Um, I gotta go to last year's. Okay, so.
Who wants to guess?
Yeah, that's, this is a good, that's a good question, try to guess.
I say, since I provoked. I'd say sixty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, good guess, anybody else wanna take a hazard a guess?
Forty-two.
Forty-two, okay.
I'd say forty-nine.
She's in between.
Anybody wanna do the, the prices right guessing, like I guess one dollar.
I'm gonna say a hundred and six thousand dollars.
Alright, um, Jeff is wildly optimistic and way off the mark, so is Ralph. Uh, I think in this last year it was thirty-eight thousand. It's actually been higher than that in the past, but not by much, I think we peaked at forty-two, forty-two-five.
That was a lot of building permits.
Yeah.
So it's mostly building permits?
It's mostly building permits, so I would say that, um.
Must be DR, I mean fees to get on the DRB.
So, so, so our planning and zoning revenue is very simple, it's just three, three, um, line items. Zone, building permits, DRB applications and what are called, uh, compliance statements. Or Bianchi statements where somebody says, I'm buying this place, the bank says I have to come and check if there are any zoning violations. We charge fifty bucks to do that research and those, those compliance statements bring in about twenty-five hundred bucks a year. Um, DRB fees are variable and can bring in between, you know, five thousand and. Fourteen thousand depending on the, the volume of applications and the type of applications. And then building permits bring in, you know, the balance, so twenty to, uh, what is it? Twenty to twenty-five, I think actually this year it was even a little bit more, twenty-seven thousand. So the bulk of what we make is on, uh, building permits, but the DRB can be a lot, this last year it was very small. It was, it was like forty-five hundred and we had budgeted ten thousand, I think.
Building permit fees are a percentage or a dollar amount for a thousand dollars worth of construction?
No, it's a per square foot value, so forty cents a square foot for residential structures. Thirty cents a square foot for accessory structures, fifty cents a square foot for, um, commercial industrial structures. Yep. Yeah, and the, the DRB fees have for a long time just been, uh, flat, like three hundred bucks for a site plan review. Uh. Certain amount for subdivision and we charge per lot, so sometimes those can be high. Um, but it's, it's, uh, it's not on a per square foot basis, or it hasn't been. Uh, we recently tweaked that, uh, to add, to add a little bit of that in there for site plan review. It, the idea being that, um, Hannaford went through our whole development review process. And I think they needed a site plan review and two conditional use reviews. So the sum total of the permit fees that they paid the town was about nine hundred bucks. And that's a thirty-six thousand square foot store with a project that took two years in the review. And, you know, who, hundreds, thousands of, you know, uh, person hours. Uh, so recently the select board updated that, the DRB charge for site plan. For new, new buildings, so that if we get another one of those big projects, it'll pay a bit more in the DRB review. But, that long-winded way of saying, our revenue is about, uh, anywhere from thirty to forty grand.
So you said the building permit fee for a residential project is forty cents?
Mm-hmm.
Per square foot.
Mm-hmm. For everything, decks, interior space, exterior space, attached garages.
So if you have a three thousand square foot house, your fee would be twelve hundred dollars, no? Four point four times three and the impact fee will be?
Or more.
A lot, yeah, so that's a good, that's a good point, um, the zoning permit fee is just one of the fees that you pay when you come to get a permit. You also pay a ten dollar recording fee, it's a pretty big deal. Um, and more importantly, you pay, uh, police and fire impact fees depending on the nature of the project. If it's a house, you're paying both of those and, uh, they essentially, uh, double the zoning permit fee. So what we tell folks is it's forty cents a square foot for a house, um, but basically budget a buck a square foot. For all those fees put together.
Now, the fire truck, how mu- how many more years before you have to buy one?
Hmm.
If you don't buy one, you gotta give all the money back, right?
Well, so there's, how long is this meeting, um, th- there's, uh.
You do, won't you?
There are two things that the fire, that the fire impact fees are being collected for, one is the expansion of the fire station. To hold a new fire truck and the other is the new fire truck that's gonna go in that expansion. Stat, by statute, um, people can ask for their impact fees back after seven years. Six or seven, I forget the number, but, uh. It could be six, uh, and if we haven't spent them in that time, they can get their money back. And our treasurer keeps a track of everybody's individual payment when it was made and so she can know. But, we haven't built a new fire station or bought a truck, right? We've spent a bunch of those fees already, because we had an architect design the new fire station and do the, the, the site planning for it. And that was all paid for out of those impact fees and I.
Went all the way through construction documents on both buildings.
Yeah, exactly, and, and we all felt that, that, that was a legally defensible, legitimate use of the funds. Even if we never built the station, it was necessary to get towards building the station. Um, at this point, I think most of those fees are just going in the savings account. Because they're waiting to see if we ever do in fact, uh, pull the trigger and, and build that expansion.
The parking lot that, well, no, the drive through connector back to.
Mm-hmm. Farmall Drive from one sixteen, yep.
That allows you to now go out that way.
Right.
Come back out.
Drive between the police and fire station and get out, yep.
And go out the back, what's, where's the money for that coming from?
From the sale of the old police station lot. So I think we sold that for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, something like that. And the bulk of those proceeds are being used, were, were used to build that road and pave it and, yep.
So shall we move on to minutes?
Yep.
I didn't see anything in the.
I had a couple, but I'll wait.
That's right.
So the two things I had done were on page two, uh, section five point nine accessory apartments. The first paragraph under that section, the last sentence says, Marie G. Expressed concern about large accessory apartments and said that she preferred the current regulation. Marie, you were here, so you can correct me, but I think what Marie said was, um, she expressed concern about the revised draft. And said that she preferred the previous draft that allowed for larger accessory apartments. Right, okay. And then on page three, um. Towards the top, there's a header that's underlined that says village growth area revisions, update and discussion. Um, and then that paragraph that's underneath it, that actually referred, that's the last paragraph of the housekeeping discussion. Where, uh. I, it said, he, the last sentence is, he recommended the hearing be scheduled for the first meeting in December and the commission agreed. That wasn't related to village growth area, um, revisions, that was related to the, the previous agenda item, the housekeeping changes. I don't think we actually talked about the village growth area zoning revisions, I think it was on the agenda. And we, we finished housekeeping and just sort of petered out and didn't, didn't even talk about it. So if you just strike that header, I think you're good.
Then it's connected, yeah.
Cause if I'm supposed to warn a hearing on village growth area rezoning for December thirteen.
We got a lot of work.
Yeah, we gotta start meeting daily, we're not there yet.
Great, and the other, uh, comments or changes? The motion?
So what?
Second?
Second.
In favor?
I abstain.
Right, I think we still passed minutes, cause two abstentions and seven people here, so like a five, that's quorum, got it. Right, um, other business.
Yeah, this is actually fun. Alex had put out a notice about a, a conference on autonomous vehicles and traffic situations and I thought, well.
Did you go to that?
I did.
Alright.
I knew nothing about it and I sat there just thinking, this is really gonna happen someday. Basically, uh, autonomous vehicle drives itself. So you can be sitting there doing your knitting and the car's doing its thing. There's also something they call the shared autonomous vehicle, which to me is like a minibus, holds twelve people. It'll, it'll come up, pick you up, take you to your destination and drop you off without a driver. Okay, um, vehicles that have the correct device can talk to each other on the road. Like say, oh, there's an accident up ahead, we've gotta stop and any vehicle that has that device, they all stop. An example he gave of them being able to define a human being from something else was. One vehicle didn't recognize a chicken that had a plastic bag around his leg. Well, I don't know what happened to the chicken, but the, the vehicle learned to identify that. And therefore, because it's a robot computer, all the other vehicles learned that too, which I'm thinking that, um, this is really.
Very useful in Africa.
The Caribbean. And, um, in the future, backpacks and shoes will have RFID chips in them. That these vehicles will recognize as a human being. And I guess kids' backpacks presently may be starting to do that, so if it senses a human being or this chip, it'll stop. Let's see, there's, um, the cost of riding one of those shared vehicles is about the same as riding a bus now. Which to me doesn't sound like it's any big deal, but personally, I don't see this happening in Heinsburg. South Burlington is really toying with the idea of doing a, a test, what they call a test bed. And defining a, a grid that this little vehicle will travel and people can use it as a transport. And the, the biggest change will be the size of the roads that are needed. They only take seven feet wide roadway, so it could be bikes, pedestrians and these little. SUV, SAV things riding on them. So they pointed out, we need to think about what we're gonna do with that extra road space. What is it gonna be, green space, is it going to be, uh, well, parking will be eliminated. Because there won't be as many gas-powered cars and I'm still thinking, this is way in the future.
I don't know, Union's got that covered now, they can fit five cars and four motorbikes in three lanes.
China is actually toying with the idea of nationwide banning gas-powered vehicles. So that would be quite a.
Already enabled, they said by a certain date.
They really are, okay, yeah.
Where's this?
China, the whole country would be, which.
It would entirely be electrified, uh, electric vehicles?
They were saying that.
I think it's like two thousand twenty-four.
It's, it's, sorry, yeah, they were saying like electric batteries for cars, they've got a hundred and forty businesses in China. And the rest of the world has twelve. But they're, they're in.
Yeah.
Uh, by twenty twenty-two, Ford and GM will manufacture autonomous vehicles that will go on any kind of street. It could be dirt road, it could be gravel, it could be paved, so that's not that far away. By twenty twenty-five, most vehicles will be connected to one another. And you can get out of your vehicle and say, go park yourself and it'll drive off in the park, I just, you know.
Go get the kids.
Yeah.
Take them to soccer.
Right, so, the only thing I, that I kept going through my mind as I'm listening to this is. Like that huge development that wants to go with Black Rock is doing, they almost mean, need to be mandated. You've gotta have one of these vehicles so that seniors or whoever can get into the village without having to own a car. I could see that working and if the sidewalks are seven feet wide.
Yep.
Yeah, would happen.
Yeah, but if, if we all have autonomous vehicles by the time that project builds out, then they'll just. Doesn't matter what your mobility issue is, you just tell the car to come get you and you step into it and it drives you there. That's what I've heard from, uh, a similar conference was that, um, the number of driver, the number of vehicles on the road will increase. Because all of the folks who currently can't drive, like kids and the disabled, will now be driving, uh, in these autonomous vehicles.
But they did say you can handle more capacity, cause they can literally run bumper to bumper at sixty miles an hour. Cause they all know what the other one's doing, supposedly in there.
Only, only if, um, everyone's vehicles are all.
All.
All connected and all doing the same thing, the moment you get some yahoo who thinks they wanna drive like it was two thousand seventeen, you know.
How are we moving goods around?
Same way.
I don't know.
Well, they did emphasize these would be good for that, because you could go for.
I mean going through an eighteen wheeler bringing.
Stuff to a grocery store or stuff.
Yeah, their, their top speed.
Are they just gonna drive over those vehicles?
No, those will be, uh, autonomous as well.
What's that?
But their top speed is thirty miles an hour.
What, how wide is a bike path, I mean, that reminds me of a bike path.
Yeah, seven foot, right, so, but some of the downsides to this is they'll be a certain group of people. Who will no longer be employed, so, you know, what's gonna happen to them?
Are there gonna be like little tracks around the country where you can go and drive, you know, a hundred and twenty miles an hour for fun?
I just wonder all these electric cars and all that, how are we gonna power all these?
That's, yeah.
Solar.
Yeah, but how are you, it's all gonna be solar?
That's what China, isn't that what China's, that's part of their plan?
China's like the worst for the environment over there.
But they're gonna change all that and they're gonna surpass us.
They gotta do a lot of changing.
Did, did they talk about the big?
They have rivers over there that catch on fire so bad.
The big moral legal issue of autonomous cars? Autonomous cars.
I didn't see any rivers on fire.
I didn't see any rivers on fire.
Autonomous cars have RFID chips, right? So what happened, the, the autonomous car says, "I can't hit that solid wall, cause I'll kill my passenger, but if I swerve, I hit that person." What do I do?
You can't make that decision.
So, so we wouldn't have to have insurance?
They're putting that on government.
The person that sold us the car would have the insurance on it?
We wouldn't.
Cause we're not driving. We wouldn't even own the car either?
No, no. We have, we don't.
I think that's his other hurdle they're trying to.
Could Ash and I already have an agreement?
I think I'd rather.
We've bought several cars.
I think it'd be more fun to be like the Jetsons. You want the flying cars. We only need roads.
Well, anyway, it was really, it was fun to think about it.
Was this a well-attended conference?
Yes, it was. There were a lot of planning, well, not planning commissions, I was probably the only one, but town planners, zoning people. As I say, Burlington and Stowe were, not Stowe, um, South Burlington were heavily populated there because they're really looking into this. Of the whole congestion problem in Burlington, the traffic at five-thirty or five was, was mentioned. You know, having a satellite where you park your gas-powered car and you take this little thing into the city. Maybe banning gas-powered vehicles totally.
This, I, I think this is really gonna, it's gonna be amazing.
Seven to ten years is the timeline.
I'd probably be alive, but.
I know.
One of these are timeless cars.
That's right. You will be alive just to say, "There it is!"
So, so Alex, a, a couple notices, St. George and.
Hey, St. George, I emailed you guys about their public hearing from the planning commission on November twenty-eighth, town plan revision, and, um, are we all good with what I emailed around regarding your schedule changes? So moving your next meeting from the day before Thanksgiving to the twenty-ninth, the following week, and canceling your, um, December twenty-seventh meeting?
Twenty-second, right?
Seventh. December twenty-seventh is your second meeting in December, yeah.
That's canceled.
Okay, then I, I will codify that with V-Cam, so they know not to show up. Or, or to show up, depending on the week.
I will not be here November twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Alex, you sent us all of that date stuff that you just.
So, move to the twenty-nine from the twenty-first, twenty-second?
Yes. I will email it out tomorrow, so you have your reminders.
All right, motion adjourned?
So move.
All right, thanks, everybody.